Okay, City Council Meeting of Monday, July 22nd, 5:00 PM will come to order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
1.1 Public comments and announcements. At this time, we would like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject, whether our subject or matter, whether it is on or not on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes. For each speaker, it shall be limited to city business, or city-related business, or matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Meetings and Opens Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come forward to the podium, state your name, address, clearly into the microphone before making your comments. Thank you. Chris Israel.
Test. There it is. How y'all doing today? Christopher Israel, 1426 Cottage Cove Court here in Seabrook, Texas. So first of all, I'd like to thank you all for having this special meeting for us. As you all do realize, it's an important meeting for all the barge employees, staff, and of course, the local citizens who enjoy going there for the camaraderie. Before we get the meeting going, I'd just like to reference all the great points and aspects that were brought up at the last meeting, being all the numbers of all outdoor events that do utilize the portable restrooms, as well as all the reasons besides it just being a bar. The camaraderie, the friendships, the love, the bonds, as well as the employees actually being able to work, support their families, have an income coming in. With that being said, we also heard all the positive aspects of it, as well as a few negatives. With anything, there's always negatives, right? You're never gonna have 100% positive outlook on anything in this world. We understand there are some noise issues, but there's noise issues everywhere. Just as a reminder, for those of us who live by the Bay Star Plant, we have 24/7, seven days a week, noise, whereas these people have maybe a Friday/Saturday noise. Thursday ends at 10:00, ours stays 24 hours, and our house actually rumbles the whole time. With that, this is really short, sweet, I just wanted again, thank you very much for listening to us, our concerns, what we're looking forward to, hoping that the Lord will pray, or that we'll pray with the Lord, and make the right decision and the right forward progress with this. So that's really all I had to say. Again, we appreciate you guys very much for having this meeting, understanding the concerns. Thank you very much.
Rick King.
My name's Rick King. I live at 1306 Marina Bay Drive in Kima, Texas. From the other night, I'm one of the pastors that meets at the barge with Saltwater Revival Pirate Church. And I thought of something the other day after I left here. You know, we've been working with them for two years now. Our anniversary will be August. We've been two years. And I went to the Turtle Club right before it closed, and it was failing. You could see it. There was hardly anybody there, you know, and steak night was about the only time anybody came. And they came in and changed it, and made it work. And the reason they did that is because of love. And whether you believe it or not, I've worked with them for two years. These men, they pass the love on to their employees, who pass it on to their patrons, and it is a good place to go. I can't believe that they won't work with the city and work with the citizens to make it work. I've watched them do countless benefits from everything, from young children with cancer to the Humane Society. They've helped us with numerous benefits to help the community. They, you know, if we need a bouncy house, they get it done, whatever it takes to make it successful, they're doing it. And I can't imagine a community that doesn't want a place filled with love like that. Because, like I said, Bill, Mike, Patrick, incredible people. I've never talked to them, that they didn't look at me and right in the eye with a look of, how can we help you get this done? And it's been that way for two years. So from my perspective, I can't imagine them not wanting to work with the city, not wanting to work with the people that live here, to make this all work. They have all kinds of solutions about the noise and redirecting sound, and they've talked to us about all that stuff, and I believe with all my heart that they will do that if you give them the opportunity. And now they just need an opportunity to survive after the hurricane and put it back together. So please, I just beg you, and I pray, that we can have these variances so they can operate and get us back all functioning again, from the church to their business. You know, I'll believe until the day I die that barge floats on love, and you're never gonna stop it. Never. Because none of us are gonna quit, ever. Fighting for them and wanting to help them succeed. Thank you all. Amen.
Dr. Sandra Harrison.
Good afternoon. I'm short. I'm Dr. Sandra Harrison. My address is 2522 Loganberry Circle, Seabrook, Texas, 77586. I live in the Red Oak Acres area. Y'all bear with me. I would like to address July 10th of 2024. As a matter of fact, Jackie touched on it last week. I'm the homeowner that had the gas line cut. Okay? I'm here to speak on my behalf. My granddaughter, who's sitting there, my husband works at the Port of Houston. He's a ship-to-shore crane operator for Local 28. I'm gonna read you something, and it's gonna be quick, brief. Right after Birl happened, Stacy Gunafels had ran out, and we saw that she saw these men digging, or starting to dig. And this was like a couple of days after Birl. And so I wasn't aware of it, I was in the house. And so I ran outside and I saw these guys digging, and she had, you know, interrupted them, and what happened was, they came on my end, in front of my house. So I'm looking, I'm like, okay, what are they out here for, you know? And so Stacy Gunafels called Ms. Gail Cook. So I asked Stacy, I said, what did Gail say? Did she have any acknowledgement of them being here? She said, yeah. I said, really? Why would you do that? And we just went through all this, and we got debris out here. Why are they digging? She said, well, according to Gail, it wasn't classified as a disaster area, and the project must go on. I'm like, really? Okay. Anyway, I was upset about that. I couldn't believe it. As they were digging, they cut my gas line. And I kind of figured it was something going on, because they were taking the dirt to cover it. So I ran out and I said, what is that? I heard the bubbling noise. Then I heard, I smelled it. It smelled like, you know, rotten eggs. So as I was, you know, going out there, I told my husband, get away, get away, get away from the house. The generator was going. So we have a cut gas line with the generator going. Really? I couldn't, that, I am so upset, because that could have blew my house up, it could have blew my granddaughter up, it could have blew us up. This is our lives, that this work was performed. Unacceptable as a city manager. Unacceptable. I'm very angry. And not only that, the fire department came out, the men were there, they had to rope all that off. And not only that, the men that were there, they could have been blown up. This could have been a really bad situation. I'm angry. Ms. Cook, I'm angry. I'm not even gonna read what I have. I'm just speaking from the heart. Totally unacceptable. Unacceptable, Ms. Cook. You could have called and emailed, said you're sorry, but you didn't. You know my email. You know my phone number. You could have said you're sorry. Then I had Center Point Investigator come to my house on Thursday of last week, and I talked to him, and I told him what happened. So I'm gonna leave it with this. I have a scripture. 1 Timothy 6:10, "For the love of money is the root of all kinds of evil." That is so true. Meaning greed can enhance, inspire, and amplify temptation of any sin, and it can also lead to a disaster. And that was a disaster.
Jordan Appleby. Jordan.
Almost to Dr. Sandra. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jordan Appleby. I live at 18721 Egrit Oaks Lane. I just wanna say, the agenda for this meeting was released, and we have, whereas the City Council of the City of Seabrook has determined that granting such temporary conditional exceptions on a temporary basis is the best, is in the best interest of the community, and will provide necessary relief and flexibility while maintaining the integrity of the city code and ordinances. It is our sincere hope that the vote reflects that statement today. But I have a caution for you, and that is this, we are paying attention now. We've heard stories of what this council and what this city has done to local business. We see what's going on, we know what it's about, and I can say you can generate just as much tax revenue if all of those empty commercial properties that my brother JP talked about were full and generating revenue. You could generate just as much tax revenue off of all sorts of small business by just working with the small businesses that you have. And I want to challenge the city to take the onus on yourselves, stop flipping it back on the barge. You say, well, we need a timeline from you, we need a plan from you, and every time they come back here and bring those things, you say, that's not good enough, or I didn't have enough advance notice, we didn't have enough time to review this. I sat in this room while an audio engineering specialist broke down for 45 minutes straight the barge's plan to mitigate their sound issues, and you told him, we have had no time to review this, even though he went into graphic detail in layman's terms that anyone could understand. We're paying attention. We know what's going on, and we're not okay with it. None of us. Please vote to reflect the statement that you made, so these people can get their employees back on track, so that they can get their business back on track, so that they can continue to prove that they are willing to work with the city to whatever end needs to be accomplished. And then take the onus on yourselves. You set the bar. If you need a timeline, say you've got this long to let me know how long it's gonna take to do your repairs. If you need a list of repairs, you've got this long to give me a list of the repairs that you need to be done. Give them some time to get the thing floating, figure out what they need to do to fix, permanently fix these things. But stop putting the onus back on them. It's your job to act as the intermediary between the city's businesses and the city's citizens. We understand there's bad blood. We understand people are upset. We've made strides to try to mitigate those issues, and it's been shut down every single time. So my challenge to you is take the onus on yourselves to help them find the solution that will either make everybody happy, or as usually is the case in politics, make everybody miserable, but at least we're all miserable together. That's my challenge to y'all, is take that on yourselves. Let the barge know what you expect from them, instead of telling them, bring us a plan, and then tell them, that plan's not good enough. Bring us another plan. Well, that plan's not good enough, or I didn't have enough time. Take some of that ownership. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Bolton. Gary Bolton? She in the back? Okay. Reese Robinson?
Hello, good evening. My name's Reese Robinson. I live at 7118 South Oak Avenue Dickinson. Today, I'm here to support my dad and Barge 295. I love going to barge, because I meet new friends, listen to good music, eat good food, and play sand volleyball. I hope you, the city, let my dad, my uncle, and his partner, my, sorry, Michael, open up the yard, so we can continue to let people have fun. Thank you for your time.
Trey Garrison.
Reese, you're a hard act of Paula. Gets over, council members, yes. My name is Trey Garrison. I get over here and I live at 4001 Old Highway 146. And I'm here today to get over here and to show my support for Barge 295, and gets over here and to ask for your approval of the recommendations that have been submitted to get over here and for them to get back in business. Gets over here, it's a family-owned business, gets over here and they work real hard. They get over here and they've got good employees, they get over, they wanna take care of the employees while they're off. Gets over here and I know there has been issues in the past, gets over here and with them. I think they get over here and tried everything they could to resolve those issues, and y'all haven't had any problems for several years, because they wanna have, do business, and gets over here and, but they need your help. Gets over here. So Barge 295, gets over here, the old Turtle Club, it's not just a bar, it's a landmark. It's been there for 40 years, and I get over here and I've been there for many years. And gets over here and they have, you know, live entertainment there, gets over here and live music, which, there's very few places in Seabrook that actually have live music, and they have some very good performers there, musicians. And now that it doesn't have live music, it is not in business, gets over here and those people aren't staying in Seabrook to listen to live music. They're going to Kima, gets over here and they're going to Webster, they get over here and Baytown, they're going other places other than Seabrook. And that's one of the, the good things about it, and about the barge, is that they could have live music, and it actually draws people in. Because I've known, when I, I've known people that have come from Needlin, gets over here and Cypress, Dallas, they get over and they want to come out and have a good time. And the barge is one of the few places that is on the water, which is what people want. They wanna be on the water. And if they get over here and are listening to live music, gets over here and that's another draw. And so it keeps them here in Seabrook, instead of going to other venues and other cities. So I just get over here and want to say that, you know, I ask, gets over here and for you to get over and help them, gets over here and they deserve to get over and get back to business. I think they've been over backwards, gets over here and to try to do whatever they can to get over here and make it happen. And we're hoping that you will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's everybody on the list. Does anybody else want to speak for or against?
Hi, I'm Tracy Tipton. I live at 501 Davis Road in Lake City. I have been going to barge for probably like six months now. Every Monday, there is a group of us that play sand volleyball that we enjoy very, very much. Since y'all have shut everything down, we really can't do that anymore. Not only is it adults that play, we bring out kids that come out. This is a family establishment. It's not just a bar. This is something that my kid loves to do. Kids that are in middle school, elementary school, we have them all out there. Why not open it back up, so we can keep our kids out of harm's way, out of doing negative things when they're with us, with family, friends? An establishment that cares about the community, about our kids, about the adults. I just ask that y'all open y'all's hearts and see that this is, this is a family. This is an establishment that actually, actually cares about not just the community, about everything that it surrounds. So if today was our day to play volleyball, we don't get to play, I'm gonna cry, because it hits a heart in my heart. My kids play every Monday with us, as well as probably like seven or eight other kids. And I'm just grateful for everything y'all do for us, because our kids are not doing drugs, they're not breaking and entering in people's houses or their cars. They're doing things that are productive. That's what we want our kids to do, and to grow up, and make great decisions. And with an establishment like this, and the owners, and the families that support them, that's what's going on. So please, please help them by giving them everything that they need to, to open right back up. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge that we are, I have a document here with the support of 999 people in support of the barge, signed by all of you. And so I just want to make council aware that I'm in possession of this, of this petition to allow the barge to open. Thank you. Okay, moving on. 2.0 New Business. 2.1 Here at presentation, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of an agreement between the City of Seabrook and Driver and Rescue Club LLC. We see of the property located at 2613 and 1/2 NASA Parkway, operating as the yard at the Barge 295, for temporary conditional exceptions to various codes and ordinances, and providing for a term.
Move to approve 2.1, the temporary conditional exceptions as written.
Second.
Discussion?
You know, I have a question. If, this whole thing is predicated on a building that is damaged by a hurricane, if, are we setting a precedent for a business that is damaged by a lightning strike, or a tornado, or a fire?
Legal precedent?
Yes.
No, I mean, I think that y'all, if y'all distinguish this, it's my understanding it's the only barge or floating business establishment in Seabrook, is that correct?
Okay.
I think, I mean, so I think if y'all limit it in scope to those kind of things, and...
We can, we can then limit it to this address, correct?
I think you limit it to the use, not the address.
I'm sorry, why?
The use. So you have a, basically a floating barge, bar, that was affected by the power outage, and was no longer...
Okay, the reason I ask that is, we had a business down on the point, it was a bar, Maribell's, it got blown away in Ike. They still own the land. Could they come back and do the same, make the same request that Mr. Robinson has...
They could absolutely make the same request, but I do think that you could treat each situation differently.
Okay. Next question is to city manager. Going back to the history of the barge, in 2017, we started, I know that we have a list of all the permits that you applied for, were granted, inspections, we went through it. I remember when you came before council asking for a variance on the food truck, it was unanimous, we approved it. Everything was going smooth until 20, what, 2021? And there was construction going on out there, things that were done, and they were not permitted, they were not to code. And after you were notified, you would expect that, okay, fine, I made a mistake, somebody made a mistake, let's get it fixed. But we had to go the whole route of going to court and getting a court order to impose those buildings, et cetera, that you had come into code. So going forward, if we were to prove this, what assurance can you offer that we're not gonna go back to that and have to go through court again? That's my question. Has it been presented to you? The other thing too, and this is city manager, has it ever been explained to you why they ignored our codes, our ordinances? These are the ordinances of the city. It's not something that the city staff makes up. The city staff is hired to enforce the ordinances that are written by our citizens. They have no leeway to make any variance. The variance has gotta come from this council. So were you ever told why?
So councillor, I think with the agreement that we have, I've included the word presentation on the agenda item, so I would ask if you'd like the applicant to come up and answer those questions.
Yes, I'd like to ask. Would you please?
Glad you finally asked.
Good.
My name's Mike Robinson. I'm one of the owners of the barge. Interestingly enough, I invited every person on this council to have a meeting with me to have this discussion. You declined. I have gone through, pardon me?
I was there three times.
You were aware three times.
At the barge, and I met with your brother, I met with your barge, I met with your brother at Fashion Cafe.
Sir, before the, well, no, let me back up a little bit. During our legal disagreement, I invited you to have a meeting to discuss what was going on. And originally, this whole thing was supposed to be over the music, until it wasn't. And you, if I don't, if I remember correctly, misstated the findings of the noise test that the city conducted. So city staff informed me as we were going through this, and mind you, the last thing I want to do is cause problems for residents. My stance the entire time had to do with the fact that we were told that we were breaking the law. I disagreed with that, and said, no, sir, we have a protocol in place, we don't go above 85 decibels, and we quit at 10 o'clock. That was my stance. I told that to Gail and her staff several times. Gail even told our landlord that we were not breaking the law. So when the city manager goes to my landlord and tells them, no, sir, he is not breaking any laws, what am I supposed to think? I think that I'm in the right. So I stood on that. Shawn Landis told me that the city was going to go ahead and do the sound study, and that if the findings came back and proved that I was in fact staying within those limits, this whole thing would probably just go away. That's exactly what he told me. So I believed that. I decided not to inflame the situation, come up here, parade around, piss off residents, I just wanted to stick on my principle that we were not violating the noise ordinance. And you guys performed the study, it came back and vindicated us, contrary to what you said in our last presentation. So I think you should go back and read that. But nonetheless, that's what the situation was about. It was about the noise. The city got the results of the noise test back, and I think it was probably two or three days before the next council meeting, I got a phone call from Shawn Landis saying that there was a concerned citizen that was worried about some code violations in the yard, and asked if he can come and take a look at it. So I let him do it. And you found all kinds of stuff in there. And mind you, number one, it had just rained, it wasn't open to the public, we only opened for certain hours, there was contractors working there, so yes, there's gonna be things laying around. And yes, there were some things that weren't permitted. We used a contractor that didn't get the proper permits. Everything else was permitted. The stage is permitted. The city knew that we were gonna have music out there from the beginning. The fence was permitted, the parking lot was permitted. We had two structures that were permitted. And you guys, because you failed in trying to determine that we were violating the noise ordinance, you pivoted. Once you knew that you couldn't get us there, you pivoted to the... Once you knew that you couldn't get us there, you pivoted to the code violations. So you sent your goons in there and they did their little assessment and they found a million things and they wrote it all up and made it look horrible. Every one of those items on that list was resolved in a matter of days once we put our attention to it. The reason that I didn't immediately tear them down when we got the notice was because in our discussions with the city, Gail and her staff, we told them, these things are built to code, we can give you the drawings, we would like you to review them and give us the proper permits. We stayed in limbo, waiting for that for months. So while it seemed to you that we were dragging our feet and not doing what the city was wanting to do, we were waiting on responses from the only people that we were having communication with. So, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of misleading that goes on here. And, uh, you know, I hate that it's come to this. You guys had an opportunity, you're pissed off because you said that you had to spend a bunch of money on a lawsuit. You didn't have to. We could have sat down and talked about it like people do. It could have been resolved. I had one phone call with the mayor and he didn't like what I had to say. And shortly after that, you know, here we are. So, I really don't know what else to say. But since our court case, we have done every single thing in our power to make sure that we are working with the city and with the citizens and trying to be good neighbors. We've come to you with proposals, we've asked people for help, I sat here and apologized. I don't know if you remember that, Mayor. I, I understand you think I owe you an apology. I'm sorry, you can probably go back and look that up, but anyway. It's, it's ridiculous, okay? We're good people. We take care of people, we help others. During COVID, we fed thousands of people. We continue to try and lend a helping hand wherever we can, whenever we can. And when the leaders of the city have an opportunity to do the same thing, instead of digging in and finding out what the real facts are and having real conversations with the people, they take bits and pieces of information and a, and a narrative and they run with it. So, anytime you want to talk to me, buddy, I'm available.
Okay, so as I understand, that you had gotten your permits and you did the building according to code and then it was inspected, is that correct?
Yes, it was.
Or did you build the buildings, then applied for the permits?
What?
I don't know, I'm just...
I, we, so the buildings that are in question, the ones that were built without the permits, we used a contractor that did not go through the proper process.
I understand.
So the buildings were built without a permit.
Okay, I, I understand that.
And, you know, we, we, we tried to remedy that.
Okay. But the remedy finally came, and I'm just, you know, let's just get all the cards on the table, that contractor didn't get the permit, he didn't build them, you know, in accordance with code, you had to tear them down.
They were built to code.
Oh, they were?
Yes, they were.
Okay.
I wouldn't attempt to have you go back and review the plans if they weren't built to code.
Okay, all right. So what you're saying then, in summary, going forward, we're all going to work together, we're all going to adhere to the city ordinances and codes, no problems?
I wouldn't waste your time otherwise.
Fair enough.
Anything else?
I, I have something. So I, I've been in, I think, for 100% sure two, but I think three meetings upstairs in that conference room with you, your brother and you, and the city manager, and I think a few other people, maybe Jackie too. And we said, let's move forward, the past is the past, let's keep moving forward. You acknowledged mistakes were made and we were moving forward, so let's keep not going backwards.
I, I feel...
Every time that happens, you just go backwards. Not you, I'm just saying, when that happens, we've resolved those issues. What I heard was you had done everything asked of you.
To my knowledge, I have.
Yes, that's the way I remember it.
Yes.
So, that's...
Yeah.
Thanks. Rob?
Obviously, there's trust issues going in all different directions in this room right now. And, and it's kind of understandable. You have three people watch the same thing and you get at least six different opinions of what actually happened. I don't remember the whole thing surrounding the lawsuit exactly as he does or exactly as you do. I do need to reread it and just make sure we're 100% accurate on that, but at this point, it's pretty much irrelevant. At this point, we have a small business that needs to find a way to move forward. There's not a way to do it in accordance with the permit that you've been issued because the kitchen sunk. It's got to come out of the water before you can start cooking there again.
Understood.
Um, you've got to find a way to do that and got to find a way to generate the revenue to facilitate the pain of that and everything else. Now, the trust issues going both ways are reflected in the last 10 days and everything that's going on, both in this room last week, which was an embarrassment to the city overall, not just to me sitting behind here, but to the people that were in the audience last week. For the first time since I got here, I wondered if I moved to the right town. It, it was not a good thing, but it's something that we have to be able to move past. I think that, that as council and city staff, there is a way to move forward past this, but if, as we move past this, the, the, the culture of criticism that goes both ways, we've got to learn a way to trust each other if we're not going to get to the end of a temporary variance and be back in court one more time. And none of us want that. But obviously, there's more than one person, and I'm one of them, that's concerned if we grant the variance, is it going to be adhered to? Everybody has a different perspective on what actually happens. I would like to find a way to move forward and get the barge operating at some level. And I acknowledge the risk based on the history between all of us, that it may not go well. I kind of feel like we need to take that risk and all of the leadership at the barge, Michael, Michael and Patrick, I ask you to help all of us, us on council, the city staff, et cetera, to just calm things down so we can find a way forward. Let's, let's, let's find a way to make this work instead of just finding a way to yell and scream at each other and insult people online and all that kind of stuff. That doesn't do any good. Let's find a way to move forward. If you're not getting results, I've talked to Patrick, I've met with him three or four times, met with you at least once. We've talked on the phone how many times, Patrick? A bunch. Trying to find a way to move forward. That, why it kind of puzzled me when you said nobody on council has, I asked, I invited all of you to meet me and no, nobody did.
That was post-settlement.
What's that?
You may, you met with me post-settlement.
Um, that was then?
Before the, before the...
Like, like I say, that, that was then, this is now, that's not necessarily the way I remember it, but that's okay. We're not going to quibble over timelines from three years ago or four years ago. We're going to try and find a way to move forward, acknowledging that there's a lot of trust issues, but let's find a way to make this work. But you guys, you have to find a way to comply with the law because that's city staff's job to ensure you're complying with it and comply with being a good citizen of Seabrook and get this stuff under control so that you can open up again and people can go back to doing what they want to do. Nobody wants to be here tonight. We'd rather be sitting on the bar drinking.
That's why we're here.
Okay.
Hang on, Mike.
Okay. Mike?
So, thank you, Rob, and a lot of the same comments, Rob, I won't reinforce what he just said as well. But I think my biggest concern, and I think the entire audience needs to know this as well, so yes, we had a hurricane. We understand you're a small business. We are all for small business. We want to help you all that we can. But I'm embarrassed and, and, and I feel horrible because the way I guess you guys went about it is what I think I'm so upset about more than anything. Trust me, I'm for all this. That's the whole point. The problem is, is y'all started a rally after you've already spoken to the city about the goals on what we're going to do here tonight, did you not? So you talked to the city, you worked out an agreement that we're looking at talking about tonight, you started a rally, so that, the 16th, we heard from everybody, which I don't have a problem with, that's great, I was in support of it anyway, whatever was happening over there, I wanted to help you guys, I do, in all manners. Then again, we're here tonight to go over it and we're still getting beat up, like we're not doing our job. And our job is to help the small businesses and every citizen in this city. And it's frustrating to me, and I'm sorry to get emotional, but y'all act like y'all know what we're deciding and what we're doing and we have an, an agenda here. That's baloney, we don't have an agenda. We are here to try to grow this city and make every resident enjoy living in Seabrook. And it's frustrating to me to have all these people rally out for one small business that I was going to help anyway and, and do good for, because I take my family there. We love going to the concerts and hanging out in the, in the yard, so I want to help you. You got to give us time. You didn't give us any time, you just spoke to them and then all of a sudden, everybody's cussing us out up here on the podium and wants us off council. Trust me, they can have my job, I don't get paid anything here and all my time, I, don't bother me any, but I'm just saying, work with us, talk to us and it, it, it just like, you guys just threw it at us and it's like you didn't even give us a time. We're working with hurricane and fixing all the stuff that we were dealing with, we were going to get to you, I promise you, because we want to help you, we want to get you open. I want to get things moving out there, because I miss the concerts as much as everybody else here.
Hold on, so, I understand the optics and, look, the first thing that was told to us by the city was, you guys no longer have a business. You guys cannot operate. What would you think?
That's technically correct and you're right. I understand that.
You're right.
So then, then after that, then you go to the city and say, hey, Gail, or call one of us, I'm sure you've got Joe and, and some of the other ones' numbers, and say, hey, what can we do, man? This is bad, we need to, we need to work through this.
We reached out to Jackie.
Well, so hold on, now, look, I didn't know if Gail was going to be able to have time to be able to talk to us. We knew what the stated position was and we knew that we needed to have help in getting resolutions so we can operate to put our staff back to work and start rebuilding, right? We hit a brick wall and we had to find a way around it, right? I mean, so, time, we have literally been working around the clock since the storm and even prior to the storm, trying to figure it all out. You know, you just don't have a disaster and wake up immediate plan.
No, I agree, that's what I'm saying, exactly, just like us.
So we needed help.
Okay. Well, I, I didn't, I didn't get a call from you guys and that's fine, I don't mind that.
That's okay.
But, but, but I'm just saying, we, we, we're all going to support you, I think, in this manner. It's just figuring out the details and, and working it out and seeing what you need and that, again, that's what we're here for.
One would have assumed that.
Well, look, look.
We made the call, that's not the sentiment that we got. And immediately, I mean, in times of need, people help each other. Yeah, absolutely. So we were shocked by his reaction. Okay? So when that happens, you're, you're going to be, you're going to be concerned.
And we have a lot of supporters that wanted to know, just, you know, I mean, there's a lot of people that were affected by this.
I appreciate it though, guys, I really do. And so we're moving forward now and that's the plan. We want to get you open.
Jackie.
We appreciate that.
I just a couple of comments. Uh, yeah, to Mike, I mean, we shouldn't have gone through all this, you know, rigmarole to get to this temporary agreement. I feel like this, you know, if Gail had instructed Nick to tell him that they don't have a business anymore and they absolutely cannot, you know, move forward, then that's something that we need to fix internally because I think we shouldn't have had to go through all this to get here. But if them being told, no, right off the bat, to rally up some troops that are all involved, that, there's nothing wrong with that, in my opinion. And secondly, to Buddy, you know, I, I can't tell you, there's people that are contractors out there that don't pull the proper permits. Just happens a lot, more often than, you know, it does. And so it's not necessarily their fault, you know, if they're, they're trusting this contractor, lesson learned, I'm sure, but I mean, you can't just say that that's all their fault, in my opinion. And that's all I got to say.
All right. I, I really didn't say it was their fault. I do understand there are contractors that don't pull permits and it falls back on the owner and they have to make it right. My question was, going forward, looking back, why did we have to go all the way to the court? I, I do have another quick question. In looking at the, the proposal, we're looking at, it says six months. Have you had an assessment done of the barge to see if all the work can be done in six months or is this just a number?
So it can happen quicker. We have to anticipate the worst-case scenario right now. We've had multiple people come out to help us assess the situation and there's a sequence of events that we are undertaking right now. And every day, we get a clear picture of what the end game is going to look like. As of right now, today, I feel like we can exceed that timeline and getting it done quick.
Okay, and, and we're going to get permits?
That's me.
I think you guys should go...
Okay, so, hold on, let, let me regress here. The whole reason that we were told that we were out of business and we no longer had a business is because we called to see what kind of permits we needed to pull.
I understand, but I'm just saying...
We have every intention.
Yes, Buddy.
So we're not...
We're getting permits.
Not going to go through the same drill again, okay? And then the other question I have is, I mean, this is the beginning of hurricane season. Are, are y'all going to be able to take steps to, and I don't know what happened, I'm sure not a marine engineer, to, to prevent this from happening again?
There are mitigation efforts that we can do, yes.
Okay.
Tom?
I too had impacted by the hurricane, really important for me to get back into business. The task in front of you is monumental, it's really huge. Let's resolve that tonight, let's get to work and get our employees back to work. That's what I did, that was what was important to me. I know it's important to you. The only thing that I would ask is just to be respectful to the neighbors and we could, we could clear a lot of this up. So, thank you for here.
Thank you.
Well, you, you made a comment about being respectful to the neighbors and I did want to touch on that really quickly because we do care about our neighbors. And I think that we could have avoided all the problem with all the neighbors, the Mr. Lamy's and everybody that comes and complains, if the city would have just been honest from the get-go about where the noise level was. You guys allowed them to believe that we were consistently and constantly violating that ordinance and it wasn't true. So...
Mr. Robson, I'll be honest with you, when the sound study was done, that was the first thing we all learned, is that the presence of sound and decibel level do not correlate. There was, and, and this is, this is something we all learned and, and I, you know, I don't have an answer for it, because as the sound studies were done across the city, there was one place in Wildwood that was over a half a mile away, the decibel level was 50, but the comment from the study said you could hear the, every word from the stage. And I'm not, this is not a criticism, this is an observation, you have the study, you have all the comments, you know it too. And that's what we told a lot of folks too, they're not violating it. When our PD went out, when there was a noise complaint, they were saying, here it is. And so after the PD went out a bunch of times, that's when we hired the sound experts who specialize in outdoor music venues, and that's what they found. I think there was one violation of, of all the sound tests and, you know, it, there was no correlation of any of it. So I don't, and, and that, that's just something else that we're going to have to wrestle with and I don't have the answer for sure.
It's a contentious topic and we want to be able to operate responsibly in the community.
I believe you. I believe you.
Let's strive for that because we can make this place better and we can. We've already been, you know, commented in Houston publications as being one of the top 40 places in the Houston area to come and visit. We are proud of that and we want to continue to, to give that opportunity to the community and address the noise issues that have, they've brought up in the past. And we can do it.
Good.
But we need your guys' help.
Appreciate it.
Agreed.
All right, I too am, am in favor of opening the barge. I've, I've been a turtle... I've, I've been a turtle since the 90s. I'm the old guy, right? But, but, and I love concerts. I was at Woodstock, for God's sakes. So, I mean, I'm in favor of this type of a venue. The problem was the complaints, and, and from the citizens, and that was, that was our biggest, biggest topic. I want you to open. I want you to come back. It actually wasn't presented that way. You know, the way it happened was that, you know, our inspector went out, you were sunk, and he said, well, you can't open. That, that led us to this tonight. There is a timetable. There is just not the city's, city's opinion. You know, Gail, Gail and them had an opinion, they were following codes, but you still have to come to council for the, for the concessions. So, that's why we're here tonight. There was a lot of angst and, and stuff being said the other night, but we didn't have the chance yet to meet as a group and vote on it. Last week, it wasn't on the agenda. We weren't able to speak on anything that's not on the agenda. So, you know, you say it was premature, you say we were, we were against it. I'm not seeing anybody against it tonight.
We weren't saying that.
I mean...
Sometimes the words of one person, if conveyed improperly, can just send the wrong message.
Well, I understand, but...
That's why we're here.
Look, so, we respect each and every one of you guys that have committed your time to try to make this community better, right? You know, my hat's off to you guys. It's, it's a job that, you know, is, is thankless, and I get it. We can't live in the past like we've already established. We just got to continue to try to find ways to move forward. So, you know...
And, and again, I, I don't think there's too many of us that aren't against, or that are against, you know, small business and, and bringing it to Seabrook. You know, I've, I've strived for the last seven and a half years to bring businesses into Seabrook. We have had highway issues. You know, we have had COVID. You know, there, there has been some mitigating circumstances of bringing new business to Seabrook, but we haven't lost any. I mean, that's the one thing. The ones that were lost were due to a highway. And, and so, you know, we want you to stay. I want you to stay. I want you to succeed and, and, and prosper. I mean, it's, it's a great city, it's a great venue. You know, yes, we have had problems with the yard, we need to get by that. You still have a number of, of special events that you can, you know, still put on in the yard, and we look forward to it. But, you know, I, I think some things were a little premature in the fact that we couldn't respond until tonight, and now we are. So, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any, any additions or edits to the proposal that anybody wants to make?
Essentially, we're waiving the food truck ordinance for that location.
Yeah.
Is that, is that in print?
There's a mention of the plumbing and also a concession for an additional special
My motion was to approve as written, so...
Yeah, I understand.
Have you used all your four events yet, or any of them? Have you used just one? Okay. So, so you're asking...
They've only had one. They've had three, they have three available events yet this year.
Still? Because we approved four, so they're adding...
But they had one rainout. They had one rainout.
Right, okay.
For clarity's sake, since those events are the big revenue generator, and they're offer, going to be operating out of a food truck, not out of a kitchen, when the events come up, was to process if they need to bring in additional resources to, to have enough food and service to accommodate the crowds.
Well, that also would be a special event permit, you know?
I just want to make sure everything that's going to come up is addressed tonight.
Patrick, you got a question?
Just one, just one, one other point. Everything that you're doing, whether it's a food truck, food truck is controlled, the food and sanitation, and it's controlled by really the sanitation department out of Houston, right? Our air scanning.
Correct.
DABC is also going to be documenting you in terms of what you're doing, serving alcohol.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no, no further additions to the temporary exception approval, go off the boat. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Item 2.2, consider and take all appropriate action on agreement between the city of Seabrook and the city of El Lago for temporary use of Zero Lakeside for debris removal. This is the, this is next to the Public Works Building. I was, I was approached by the mayor of El Lago, who, who didn't have a plan in place to take his debris anywhere, so I'm try, we're trying to accommodate El Lago. They'll have separate piles. So, if anybody has any objections to that, we're just helping out a neighbor.
Move through 2.2.
Second.
In, in the motion, yes, if you can, so you're attached...
Wait a minute. All right. I think we can hear. Go ahead, Gail.
All right. So, Mayor, as you mentioned, El Lago was approaching us for an area for debris. The attachment is showing off Lakeside. They have walked that site with Kevin Paget on Saturday, and they're not able to use that site. They're requesting an amendment to what's before you. So, it would be at Public Works in lieu of the Lakeside location, but the rest of the agreement would stand.
Right. Yeah. They were asking for the area next to the school over there.
Right.
It really wasn't a good location, but it was their only first choice. And so, Kevin worked it out with them to, to be able to use the, our yard at...
And this, this is going to be completed within...
Couple weeks.
Before school starts.
Couple, oh, yeah. Well, we're not going to even, we're not going here anymore. We're, we're going over by Public Works.
It's not too much of a move for them to go all the way over there to Public Works?
No. It's the same contractor.
It's the same, oh, okay.
We share a mutual monitor, and the monitors reviewed our site, which is ideal for our debris and, and has the capability of taking on that additional capacity and separating them, so that there's not any intermingling of the debris. So, like I mentioned, it'll be over in a few weeks, and we're not seeing necessarily an issue with the, sharing the site. It is recommended that going forward, El Lago has a predetermined debris site.
Yeah.
Approved.
I scolded the mayor about that.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
I think whoever made the motion needs to amend it to include this new site and the second.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we, we didn't have the information until Friday, after the agenda was posted, so we moved the site on Saturday. So, it is, we do have to amend the motion to go to the Public Works Building on, on Red Bluff.
I think I seconded. Who, who made the motion?
Okay. I moved to amend my motion, to amend my motion to include the site for the Public Works out off Red Bluff.
Second.
All in favor?
Of the amended one?
Of the amended.
amended.
All in favor of the original motion?
Well, first the amendment first.
We did that.
They, they took a vote on it. It was unanimous.
Yeah, we did that.
Was that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Now, for the, all in favor of the first motion?
Yeah, the original.